Let's build your home, please.
I don't know.
I'll put this up on the screen.
Okay.
Ever record a workshop?
We do. I think that's a good idea. We want to have available posteries so people in the public can remind me of what silly things I've said. Happens all the time, though.
I wait on me. All right. We are, we are recording. I am calling us back into session at, uh, what time is it? Nine forty-nine, and we will move into our workshop on, you know, discuss Commissioner Court politics procedures. And, and what I wanted to do is the commissioner, the rules, procedure, conduct, and the corament meetings of the county commissioners court. And I just want to give you a background on this. This one we signed in, uh, March, I believe, of twenty twenty-three when I came on board. This particular form is something that ninety percent of all the counties use the exact same wording. And there's a template from tax, then most everything is, uh, pretty cut and dry. There's not a whole lot to be changed. Other than the items that are in, uh, highlighted that I wanted to discuss with, uh, but, you know, before we actually, uh, proceeded on, you know, any decisions that we made. Again, we're not making decisions today or vote on anything. We're just going to discuss it. And one of the first things I want to talk about is the date of our commissioner's court meetings. And, uh, you know, currently it's on Wednesday. Uh, they, uh, and I'm glad Keith is here because, uh, he can give more background. At, at one point in time, they're on Tuesdays, and ninety percent of all the counties meet either on Monday or on Tuesday. Okay, there's only thirty counties that meet other days of the week and, uh, uh, in that regard. And I kind of feel like Tuesday would be a better day than Wednesday, but I just wanted to get your input on that. The, the, the reason why we moved from Tuesday to Wednesday dealt with payroll and the requirement to approve the payroll before, uh, at a commission court meeting. Uh, but then the legislature changed the law that allowed us to ratify payroll rather than having to approve it in, in, uh, in advance, so that, that, uh, requirement is not, uh, there as it was before. So I guess Kenny can tell us about that. I'm, I'm sorry about why we moved the commissioner court meeting to Wednesday. It's because to meet, meet the payroll requirement.
Yeah, at that point, uh, I used to, we had to have payroll ready for the commission court. And that's when we moved it to Wednesday, sort of Tuesday because I had Monday to get everything together for Tuesday. So then I moved to Wednesday, when now the law changes and now you can ratify payroll. So you don't have to have it ready for that commission court. You go ahead and run it, and then you can put it on the next day.
So. So that was, that was the reason I got moved from Tuesday to Wednesday. So my question is, do we want to leave it on Wednesday or would we like to move it back to Tuesday? Any input?
Are there any reasons to have it on one day or the other, other than a payroll issue or? I mean, is it also possible for us to discuss having one, um, one a quarter or, uh, in, in the, in the evening? So that people who work during the day can, can attend? Is, have we ever considered that?
Well, the issue with having them in the evenings is the amount of staff and elected officials that need to be present or are requested to be present. Uh, and, you know, if we moved it to the, I would, I would recommend or suggest we do workshops. We could possibly do workshops in the evening, but you still, if you have them here in the courthouse, you're going to have to, uh, get security in here and pay them overtime in order to, to do it. So, uh, but if we do more town hall meetings, you know, and, and convey the information, uh, in that regard, then we don't, wouldn't have to do it. But right now, I prefer to do it during the day so that we can access all of the requests, the, the needed personnel that are, uh, to operate. So.
And Keith had some.
The reasonable change is like you said, and it was just such a good fit. We didn't meet every other Tuesday. We met on the first and third Tuesday, whatever it was. And then that was, that was, I mean, that was told you with, with having the next one or going a little longer. And we said, we went to this every other weekend. It just worked out so good to realize that most of the holidays are either on Fridays or Mondays. And when the holiday was before, then everybody was frantic in here on Tuesday morning, trying to get ready for a court. They pulled the staff out and did the next bit stuff on Friday, trying to get ready because they were going to get off the mountain. So we just wound up getting a good fix, so that's what we did. So, but, but any, the next report to me, I, I think every one time a year, you all set the, the day, the, the time of the court is going to be. When that day comes around, you can change it whatever you want.
I don't care what day it is, but I don't. I mean, I don't think, I think we need to have, if we're going to change it, we need to have a reason, not just because, just because two hundred and eighty counties do it on a day doesn't mean that we have to do it on that day.
Right. Well, I'm just asking if you have a preference. I don't mind.
I don't, I don't have a preference. The only thing that's called about is like the bills. Now, you know, we go through our routine now, what we do it. We have a cutoff at Wednesday at noon. Then you have to have all backup in by Friday or before we can lay down. Well, any day you go backwards, then that's going to move everything else backwards a day. Which means, you know, we're still have to have so many days to get everything wrapped in. You may have to have so many days, the office has to have time to go through. That don't change. So anytime you back up, it's probably going to move everything else back one day. Like, so Wednesday, that would be Tuesday, it's cut off at noon. And then until the Friday at whatever, it will be Thursday at whatever.
What do you, what do you prefer? I mean, it, it affects everybody else. We're going to be, we're going to be up here one, one day every two weeks.
Yeah.
You have a preference on?
I, I just really like it.
Very good. Okay. Is that what you want? I just wanted this commission recorder to discuss it and see if anybody wanted.
We may work whatever we say. Originally, that's why it was moving recently.
All right. Second, second question. What about meeting every week instead of every other week?
Negative. I don't think this county has enough business yet to meet every week.
My, my biggest concern is the bill payment. And you, you can very easily get a bill in and it would be three weeks before it'll get paid because of the timing of getting it approved or getting it submitted. And, yeah, and, uh, and that's kind of, you know, I don't like to, uh, delay our payments of our vendors, uh, because of that, but, um.
Are we getting any kickback from the vendors about being late or anything? I tend to really grow as well, once it's through the cracks or something. Yeah, I mean, we're going to have mistakes or one of them. Are, are the. Most of your vendors are going to be on a minimal thirty day. You know what I'm saying? They expect that. So.
But they're dealing with the government. They expect it to be slow. Okay. Well, there's, there's only thirty counties that need every week, every week, and, uh, three of them are surrounding us. Smith, Kaufman, and Henderson, all me every, every week. But, okay, I just, I want to throw it out there. If we don't have, feel a need that there's for that, let's, we'll go on.
Ten years from now, it might be a different story.
Right. Okay, the next, the next item has to do with the due date of the information for the agenda and for the, uh, documentation. And one of the things that I'm facing is that, uh, oh, two things. The first one is the, uh, uh, it has been requested and most all other counties around us do this is to post the bid packet, or not the bid packet, the, uh, agenda, uh, packet, uh, on the internet. The, the same, the same time that the agenda is posted. And there's two issues with that. One is our agenda packet is not completed, uh, uh, at the same time that the, uh, agenda is. And that causes a delay with, uh, you know, I, I assume we could go ahead and post it, you know, like a day later and get all the information in. But if we don't have the information in, we post an agenda packet and then we add more later. I, I don't know what the consequences are. It's very important that we get all the agenda items in for that. That's the first issue was about posting agenda is making sure we have everything in there. The second item is, that I've just discovered, is there's information in our current packets that are, uh, should not be made public information that needs to be redacted. And, uh, uh, I, uh, 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 an example is donation, a check donation for roadwork from an individual in the county. Well, in our packet, we have a copy of the check. Well, that ended, that check account number and the address. Uh, you know, the name can stay, but the address and the, uh, account number needs to be redacted, which means marked through so that you can't see that. So that, that's going to take some time in order to get that done. Uh, so, you know, uh, my question is, uh, what, what dates and times do we want to, uh, set? Currently, we said it is supposed to be, uh, Thursday at noon for agenda item and Friday at noon for any documentation that goes in the pack or in the, the, uh, what we call a pack binder, the binder. So, uh, we currently are, uh, uh, very loose with those rules. So the question is, do we keep them there and just, uh, tighten up the enforcement of it or do we change?
I wouldn't say we're very loose with those rules. Some ought to take advantage of it. And I've told Keegan this before, stick to your guns and don't take it. And I think that goes for all of us. Cause, uh, I've, I've, I've tried to help Keegan and, and me too enforce that rule unless it's an emergency. Thursday at noon, take nothing else.
Okay. And, uh.
What consti, what constitutes an emergency? What would you say an emergency?
Well, it's a gray area too. Well, I mean, I, I don't have an answer to that question. I mean, if something, hey, this has to be, this is due by Monday or, or something with female or federal or something that has to be done, there is a deadline. And I, I would say it would constitute an emergency, but to give it a definition, I, I don't, I can't answer that.
Okay, so, uh, as far as submitting for the agenda packet, it'll be noon. And, and do we maintain the same about the, uh, Friday for documentation? Cause we typically don't get the, uh, bill payment report until Monday or Tuesday.
Judge, that, that bill packet shouldn't be in that. You, these guys got to have time up to, they can't last again. And, and saying that those bills have to be in there on Friday to get paid is absolutely exist, but you talk about the hard way vendors. Um, that the bill packet should not be, that shouldn't have to be in there for those good bills.
Okay.
If something comes up and they pay a bill not before appointment, you post it that you're paying bills. And if anybody wants to see what bills they're paying, then they can get that court and have a seat with them.
You know, they can request an open, open, uh, request, yeah.
As long as you have time to see those bills in, in reasonable time before you come in here, just about a question then, line, uh, uh, fast first. You, you can, you post it, you're going to be lying out in fact first. You can, you can put one hand out in the court, you do. Long as you have time to look at it before you come here and then strap me in place. Uh, that's not the best stuff. It should be, thanks for the product.
Bill payments and, uh, transfers, you said?
That's what I'm leaving. I'm leaving y'all just hurt yourself.
For, uh, the commission court minutes, I usually will work on those and get the notes, you know, I may have a rough track by that Friday, but I usually will get a key in and I'll get a, sort of, correction and I can work on that over that week and, and get it back to you or that Monday. So just minutes by autumn, being packed it, so, but the bottom.
I, I agree. Long she gets it too. When I was sitting there, I'm certain we got too many time that I could read it before I walked in here. I was good with it.
So, minutes, uh, what my thinking is, because it's going to take some time to do redaction is that we would actually post the binder on Monday. If, if the meeting's on Wednesday, the agenda gets posted on Friday, then we will commit to having the binder, uh, posted by, uh, Monday at five, which gives us time to redact and any, any light stuff come in and can be put into it. So that's kind of what my ten is. If you, if you have, don't have a problem with that. Okay.
Does that affect y'all, Keegan?
Yes.
Is, is there a public front for the poster, for the minutes or for the packet to be posted online? Or is that just something we're proactively doing?
Uh, most of the surrounding counties do it and most cities do it.
But there's no requirement.
There's no requirement. No. Well, uh, it's part of the open records. It's better, it's best that we, we already have the information. We ought to be proactive about providing it to the citizens. That's, that's the objective. I've already got, uh, I've already got it set up on our website and I'm just, uh, waiting to get everything finalized as far as the, uh, manner in which, uh, see if I can get to it.
I also have a question.
Yes.
Um, one, this is going to be here in the reactions.
Me?
So I would have to share the password to the binder with one part of the commissioner's court or there would be a separate copy made. And when people bring in the pieces, like they did, uh, a few sessions ago, they brought in the packets. Normal gave me that put in binder, but it was scanned in in the final back.
Okay, well, uh, what I would prefer is that when you post the, uh, uh, Monday morning, you provide me an unpassword protected copy of the binder. And then, that with that copy, I will, uh, redact it and post it, go through and redact and post it. And, uh, uh, hold on. One of the things too that, that, uh, I would like for us to add to our rules is to have the county judge sign the agenda. That's what the surrounding counties do, all of them, but Hunt County, which there's no signature whatsoever from either the clerk or the, I don't know why. But the purpose of that is that, uh, and I have learned a lot in the last six months about properly wording your agenda items to make sure you get what you want accomplished, taken care of. And by allowing me to sign it before we post it, it gives me the opportunity to review it and make sure that the wording is correct to accomplish what we want to accomplish. So, uh, is there?
I don't agree with that.
You don't? Okay. All right.
That's me though. I'm only one.
So, uh.
It, it. The, uh.
The other, other issue is there's, uh, in, in many cases, I, I don't, uh, now, we, we try to get a preview of the, uh, agenda before it gets posted. Uh, we have roughly two hours or so. And, uh, but there are times that I don't have a clue about what the agenda items are until it's posted. And, uh, I think, I think we should have the opportunity to look at the agenda before it gets posted to ask any questions from those who have submitted stuff.
What, what's objection on, on the judgment, the agenda? I don't, I don't know.
Well, there's not a statute for it and I'm not saying this would happen, but if the judge has a sign off it, and I'm not saying Andy, I'm saying the judge has a sign off of it. Well, we don't need to talk about that today. He can take that off and then sign for it. And I'm not saying it would happen, but I mean, you're opening the gate for that and there's no statute to do it. If we're putting it on the agenda, if you put something on there or I put something on there, it's our responsibility to get it worded right and talk about it, not one person.
Well, I know elected officials have to have their item approved by at least one of the commissioners, one of the commissioners for the county judge for us to be able to get something upon the agenda. Can't just give a fee then so put that on there. Someone has to agree.
Is that the way we do it, Keegan?
Yes. If they don't talk to one of the commissioners or they don't talk to the judge, it doesn't get on.
But if I put an item that I want to see on the agenda, I can just give it straight to you and, and nobody else is required to sign it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Everybody in the know, I can put it down.
Right, right. That's right. Yeah, agreed, agreed. I'm, I just, I was misunderstanding.
The city is, the mayor says to give him.
Mm-hmm.
But not like that in.
Right. Okay. So, uh, what, I wanted to show you what I've been working on, uh, under the commissioner's court. If you go over here, commissioner court information. And what we have now is two thousand twenty-five, we have agenda. And you can, you just type in here and go in and look at the agenda. It's basically one spot for everything, all the information related to the, uh, county government. And then, uh, I'm working with Susan about getting the, uh, copies of the approved minutes after we've done it. And I'll post them there. And then this is where the binder will go. And then I'm giving the YouTube link over here. So if you, you know, and this, this has been really helpful to me for, for getting, uh, that. And so, and I finished up, or I'm, I've already got all the agendas in and some of the videos for two thousand twenty-four. I'm just going back to two thousand twenty-four and doing all that, which by the way, so you, so you know, I got my. Where did I put it?
Can I ask a question?
You might. Go ahead.
Hey, on the binder, I know nothing's up there, but kind of like what we're talking about a while ago, certain information doesn't even be in the binder, like the checks you were talking about.
Right.
And say, and say the bills, if they don't get there on time, who's going to be responsible for that? Hey, all this can go, well, hold on, this can't go. This doesn't have to be on there. We got to police what we put on there.
That's what I said, I'm going to be doing.
Okay.
You know, initially, so that I get familiar with the process, want to do, and then I can delegate it. Then we can get somebody else to do it.
Does, does it have to be the honor of fire to, or can it be, you put it on after the commissioner's court?
Well, here's the deal. Right. Uh, uh, that's not the part, the one I want to post, but it's the one that, uh, people want to see what it is we're fixing. They want it ahead of the commissioner court meeting so they can read the contracts. They can read, you know, understand what it is that we're discussing. And that, that's the, the purpose of it is to give them the opportunity to review it before we put it in there.
Yep.
So.
Transparency.
Yes. So we are, we're in good shape. I've got this all done and, um, I've got all videos, uh, located and this will let you go in and, uh, and do it, and I will keep updating it as we go along. So that's what I'm doing and that's what, what I want. So if Keegan just can just provide me with the binder, uh, when she posted, first time she posted, uh, provide me a unpassword protected copy and that I will use to redact, go in and, uh, uh, and, uh, and then I will post it up here probably the day after, like Monday evening, something like that. So, okay. Uh, let's see. So that, that concludes everything I have on the rules for the commissioner court unless there is, uh, there any other changes that you would like to suggest on rules, the commissioner court?
It, uh, I'm not necessarily in favor of this, but I want to at least have discussion on it. Whether or not we allow open comments prior to these meetings, uh, on, uh, agenda items and non-agenda items. If we have a time limit on the, on the limit of time or if, you know, if there's a hundred and fifty people here to talk on one item, is, you know, can we institute into our rules that, uh?
Yes, it's already there. It's already there. Okay. Uh, we're looking at the person right here. Each member of public appears has five minutes to speak. However, if the maximum discussion time on any single agenda item is thirty minutes. So if you have fifteen people talking about it, then they have to divide that thirty minutes into the fifteen. So each person has two minutes is what it is. So, uh, and again, they have to participate. Now, one of the things that, uh, some counties, I know the, the city of Canton allows public comment about government matters uh, in theirs, which doesn't, doesn't conform to, uh, agenda item. And there are some counties that, that do allow public comment on anything, uh, not, not just on agenda items. And what, uh, and again, the, the reason why most people limit it to agenda item is to ensure that the, uh, that the topics discussed are related to the business at hand in most cases. And, uh, there was a Tarrant County commissioner court meeting that went eight hours because they allowed public comment to be on any item. On, on any item. And so that's, that's kind of why, uh, we, we should leave it, I believe we should leave it limited to, uh, uh, agenda items unless. Look, sound good? Okay. Very good. Any other? There, there also, there is a thing, I have seen it used, Smith County, um, I love watching their video. The commission court meetings, because they have a very active public comment group. And, uh, there have been times where the, the, uh, uh, the judge has had to order a, uh, was contempt and, uh, and have somebody, uh, haul up to jail and, uh, do a, a fine for basically it's a limited amount for contempt to court is twenty-five dollar fine and, uh, twenty-four hours in jail. So it, uh, I, I've watched them happen in, in, in several cases. So, okay. All right. Anything else on rules? I will, uh, modify that or I'll update this. Uh, actually, it was nothing to update. I will just resubmit it with our names to be approved at the next commission court meeting. Okay. All right. Uh, the next item is liaisons. And, uh, I get put the definition of liaison in, in the binder so that you can, uh, see it. But what, uh, wrong way, wrong way. What I have done is the liaison list that we have from two thousand twenty-three that Virgil put together. I have gone into it and I have simply replaced the, uh, current commissioner, uh, for the, whatever precinct with, uh, uh, for the old commissioner. And this, these are all the different, uh, liaisons right here. Now, there's two things that I want to say. The yellow highlighted ones, I'm already serving as liaison just because the amount of correspondence I have with them. And I don't know if you want to change it. I, we can just leave it. Uh, but if you want to change it, uh, you know, I deal with giving out probation on a daily basis or, or a weekly basis anyway. And it's our commission, Elvis comes to me whenever we got stuff going on. And this is one more, one more down at the bottom. I can't see. I don't know why. Let me do this. What is it?
That's me.
That's right. It's Harry. I, I, I deal with, it was Harry and I actually have to prove his timesheet. So, uh, I don't know if you want to make those changes or just let me continue on. The other one is these, uh, kind of orange colored ones. We've got our two newbie commissioners appointed together and I don't know if we really want to do that. I don't want to put that pressure on these guys, you know?
I don't really want on any of them. Lee, you can give me Kenny for Mitch.
Okay. All right. Need, any other changes? Anybody want to volunteer, want to be changed to be a liaison for a particular, particular one? Of course, obviously the constables and JPs, you're the, the commissioner for that precinct is, is naturally on there. And apparently I'm the other one for the, uh, JPs.
I think HR wants to change.
Okay.
To, to Bobby and me.
All right.
Yes.
Who they have right now?
I don't know.
Um, I had Virgil and Chad.
Okay.
And I think before that it was something different.
I feel pretty rejected by this. I feel a little rejected by that.
You've got to earn your.
Oh, to earn. So, uh, adult probation, uh, uh, there's not a whole lot of interaction with them, but I do feel like I need to be, uh, on there. So who wants to drop? Bobby or? Oh, okay. So we can leave constables or they are treasurer. So I think that pretty much, uh, I will, uh. Pass it out. I will make the changes and, and distribute it and then have it on the next commissioner court. Meeting agenda to approve. And then we'll, uh, let each one of the, uh, department heads or elected officials know. What's, what's going on there. Okay, that's all I had unless you have anything else. With this workshop.
I didn't, I didn't realize my, my workshop got scratched off till it was too late.
Which, which workshop was yours?
Was the committee.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't realize that was.
They've already voted.
Kenny had, Kenny had a comment.
Well, I just wanna make sure on the fact of the bills. You know, we're talking about the finish whatever week, we'll be able to do the bills once a week. I just wanted to comment. I know that when Sandy was here, she was totally against that. Also, I was totally against that here. We're totally against that. It takes a lot. I know, Michelle, she didn't stay up with the bills every other week. And I remember when the comments come up about doing it once a week. They didn't wanna do that. Sandy was against it, so Michelle.
Okay.
I didn't wanna make that comment, so.
I, I had not got that feedback and that's, that's good to know.
If, if we did go to a weekly meeting, would it be possible to still just do bills once every other week? I mean, it just keeps.
It's something like a petty thing, but something never works that way. They're, they're always under the gun.
Give them an inch, you're gonna take them all.
Yeah, that's true.
So I remember the comments down there. Sandy was, no, we are not doing that. Michelle was totally against that. So I'm just saying, well, that was your comment before when this issue kind of was.
Who was their liaison? They should have known that.
Uh, you know what? I don't think there is a liaison for the auditor.
We got an auditor now. She can speak up.
And she's definitely sitting out there shaking her head.
No, I'm not speaking for her. I'm just saying, I think she comments were made once before.
I think she's agreeable with you though. She's still gunshot.
Okay. All right. And, and by the way, when I was doing the, the website stuff, uh, last year, two thousand twenty-four. We had twenty-seven regular meetings. We had one extra because of, we moved, uh, uh, first meeting in, uh. January to go back to December. That's why we had twenty-seven. We had fourteen special meetings. We had two emergency meetings and we had eighteen plus workshops. So it was a total of sixty-one meetings. And while the workshops concurred at the same time as the, uh, regular meeting or a special meeting. So.
I think we need to keep those special meetings down to a minimum.
Okay.
We can.
I agree.
And just, uh, for a limited item.
Down in. For example, today, we had a special meeting for Sandy or that. That was for that. I don't, when it comes to that, we don't, we shouldn't try, well, I need to add, put this on there, put this on there. That's what it was for. I don't know, right there. That's it. I'm not, because, unless, unless it was very important, which none of these in my opinion were.
I agree with that. All right. You have a question? Yes.
Do the meetings every week, bills, not filter every week.
That's what we just said. We're, we're not changing anything. Wednesday's at nine every other week.
Well, I only as being a fourteen citizen, if I know the consistency that we generally have these meetings. Every, every Wednesday, I'm not having the. I don't really know about this. I guess you're gonna put it up on the website. But you say we have these meetings at these times and then, but then every three weeks we have a special meeting for some of them that turns into twelve different things. That, that just makes as a citizen on my side. Wonder why we're having to do that. Who records the organization and what, if it's simply.
Well.
I, I think we went to special sessions.
Right. Well, and also the fact that we changed two of the meeting dates and in January made it confusing for a lot of people too. So, but that, we had to because we couldn't meet on those particular days. All right. Anything else?
I'm like a motion we adjourned.
All right. We, we don't actually vote in the workshops. So.
Really? You have anything else to say?
Ten, ten twenty-three. We are, we are.
Well, Judge, don't we have to adjourn? Cause we went to a recess during commissioner's.
Oh, that's right. We're in a special session. So we're, we're back in. So is there a motion? You are, you are so correct, Mitch. You are.
Yeah, y'all got distracted real easy.
All right.
I know my job.
So. So, did you make the motion?
He did. And I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passed.
Someday I'm gonna object to adjurging.
Yeah, just to, you go, you just want.
These things is not like.
Okay, not a problem.